Did that change every page there?
Press down with control key and you work. Control and then roller mouse wheel. Oh, thank you. Would that work now if I change pages?
Oh, well, we can still go back to it though. What pages do you want?
It's in the hall.
Yeah, it's really in the hall. Eventually, I have to read the order. And then my scroll, I guess, is the one that's.
Will, are you hearing us? Will, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
There, there is a prison alive.
All right. Thank you, Will.
Is good? Okay, I can see by my clock on my phone that we have reached the six o'clock hour. It is time to start our regularly scheduled second meeting for the month of August. We are in order. Mark, would you please lead us in the bunch?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, you can please take the roll.
Michael Hill.
Here.
Paula Loz.
Here.
Darrell Ricker.
Here.
Stephen Adams.
Present.
Mayor Holmes.
I'm here. Let the record show we have the full council.
Court.
All right. Number four amendments to the agenda and deprecations conflict. Council, do you have any?
None here.
I think I'll do a shotgun one. There are some land approvals, I believe, on today's agenda, and it is a small city, so of course, we have all seen them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There's one item, the originally published budget or agenda on public hearing nine D. It said 2020 to 2021 foregone revenue, and that was corrected to the 2021 to 2022 foregone revenue.
Okay. So, Will, do we need a motion to make that change? Does this change the?
I don't think so.
All right. Sounds good. Moving on, this is an action item, consent calendar. Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before us on the consent calendar for approval is our regular council meeting minutes of August 11th, 2021, and our regular and special bills as presented in the packet.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hill, I'd like to make a motion to approve because it's in the same calendar as presented. Motion made.
No, second.
I think Steve Beech is the bunch. Second advice, Stephen. Any further discussion? Sheriff, can you please take the roll?
Michael Hill.
Hi.
Stephen Adams.
Hi.
Paula Loz.
I'm Darrell Ricker.
Hi.
Motion passes. No ceremonies or reports tonight. Moving on to seven, visitors' comments. This is an opportunity to address concerns not on the agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. I'll make ten forward. Going, going, gone. No rule business tonight, so moving on. Nine, public hearings. Preliminary plat for Thayer Farms North. And if I had a guess, I would say it's, you start with Carrie, is that right?
You may start with me, Sheriff.
Was that the plan?
Yeah. Can I have a charge plate?
Yep.
Okay, so, this is a request for preliminary plat with a major subdivision, consisting of 146 single-family residential lots on approximately 37.56 acres. Projects to be developed in phases, subject to market conditions, with public improvements anticipated to start this.
Is there any way we can fix that?
I'm working on it.
What do we have?
Oh, just the static. Go ahead. Keep going.
Okay. So, this proposed subdivision does not have an address at this point. It's generally located half a mile northeast in the corner of the intersection of Lancaster and Greensberry Roads. Can you go to slide number four, please? You can see where it's circled there in purple. It's just above the Thayer Farms project, which is currently under development, and it is just to the west of the Golden Spike Plan Unit Development. This property is currently undeveloped, and it is Zoned R2. The proposed average lot size is 8,152 square feet in area. In the west range between approximately 7,680 square feet is the smallest, up to 11,943 square feet. The intent is to provide additional homes to meet housing demand within the city in areas already developed with single-family homes. This developer has committed to developing only single-family homes, even though duplexes are allowed in this zoning, and to providing a $300 per building lot donation to the Lakeland School District in order to help mitigate impacts. They will also be constructing a hardscape fence, which will be installed along Rio Grande, I believe it's Avenue, Rio Grande Avenue adjacent to the project, similar to the one that's currently located along Lancaster Road with Thayer Farms Development. They'll also be providing fencing, like solid vinyl or other, along the northern and western property developments of this project. Slide three, please. So, let's see. You can see here that where the project site is in the lower right-hand corner, a little bit clearer. Again, the zoning is R2S. Slide five, please. This is the future current future land use map. It shows the property is, land use designation is transformational. Residential use is compatible with this designation. Next slide. Here is the proposed subdivision overlaid onto the property. Again, you can see Lancaster Road there at the bottom. Greensberry is running up the left-hand side. Next slide, please. Surrounding uses to the north, there are two private residences and a shop and storage lot for the Golden Spike Plan Unit Development. The two private residences are Zoned Agricultural in Cooney County, and then the storage lot for Golden Spike is Zoned R3 Multifamily Residential. To the east is the Golden Spike Plan Unit Development, which is R3 Multifamily Residential with a PUD overlay. To the south is the R1 Single Family Residential neighborhood of Thayer Farms Plan Unit Development there. And between this development, this planned development, that is the undeveloped utility easement for the power lines and gas lines. To the west is undeveloped agricultural use in the ownership of Meyer, and that's Zoned both Cooney County Ag and also R2 Single Family Residential in the City of Rathrum. Next slide, please. So, this shows the intended project phasing. They intend to phase starting on the south end of the development, closest to Thayer Farms, and then work their way up northward towards Nagle. Next slide, please. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did have a hearing to consider this, and they did determine that preliminary plat is supported by the City Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is or can be consistent with Rathrum City Code's minor revisions plans. Those are just typical revisions that are noted by staff, things like maybe changing a signature block or something like that. Nothing that would substantively change the plans. This proposed for the zoning use and lots, this proposed use is an allied permitted use in this zone district. This developer does have a vested right to be able to develop this property in accordance with the R2 Zone District Standards, which allow for both single-family and duplex lots, subject to lot size under standards. Lot size minimum seventy-five hundred square feet, and as discussed, it has been determined in the preliminary plat that all the lots meet that. And again, the applicant has stated that the purpose of the development is for single-family homes only. Construction on the lots will be subject to individual building permits demonstrating compliance with zoning and development standards as found within City Code at the time of development. And the provision of additional housing within the city is anticipated to help address the current housing market, where residents are finding it increasingly challenging to find housing by providing additional available housing stock and housing options. It can help the market adjust over time. Additionally, additional housing stocks within the city are anticipated to help attract additional commercial and industrial businesses to the city, which provide for additional services and employment opportunities, which has been expressed often as a concern of the citizenry and has been identified through a comprehensive and update process. Next slide, please. Access and transportation was also evaluated. This was reviewed by the City Public Works Director, City Engineer, for conformance with the city's transportation plan. Has been determined to be in keeping with that plan. Idaho Department of Transportation, the two highway districts, and KMP are the Cooney Metropolitan Planning Organization. Organization work also provided an opportunity to review the proposal for light comments. They, none of those chose to do so. The proposed access to the subdivision will primarily be, it's anticipated primarily, from Rio Grande via Lancaster due to the type of road that Lancaster is and the width that it has. Secondary access is anticipated, lower volumes from Rio Grande via Nagle. Both Lancaster Highway 41 and Nagle Road, Highway 41 intersections, will have fully actually a traffic lights installed as part of the Highway 41 expansion that's occurring now. And these should be installed prior to fall of next year, which should be well before most of any residential building that would occur within this plat. The section of Rio Grande within the Thayer Farms Development to the south is being constructed as part of Thayer Farms' third edition construction improvements or bonded appropriately. And that section of Rio Grande connecting to Nagle Lane ordinarily is completed with this development, the Thayer Farms North, with the eastern half to be constructed or funded by the developers of the Golden Spike Development. And that was an agreement that was provided at the time that they developed their PUD. Next slide, please. You can see here that within the existing Golden Spike Development, there's one street, West Yosemite Street, that extends through to the western boundary of their property. It's highlighted here in yellow. The developer of the Thayer Farms North developer does not intend to utilize that connection or provide any access through Golden Spike unless it's otherwise required. It could be required by the fire department for emergency access or something like that. If that's the case, then there may be an opportunity to provide a gate with an OX box or some other alternative. So, this project is not anticipated to generate any traffic through Golden Spike Development whatsoever.
Period.
Yes.
Is Yosemite currently fenced?
I, I believe that there's a fence all the way down that property line. Yeah.
There's a pedestrian gate, but the street part is gated.
And so, it's typical, as with all developments within Rathrum, that we require developments to provide connectivity for future uses that are beyond their planned development. So, that was consistent at the time that it was developed with that requirement. Next slide, please. So, you can see here, the primary, on this slide, the primary access again is anticipated from Lancaster, which is an arterial, up through Golden Spike, which will be a major collector. It's very wide, and that should provide the primary access to this. There will also be access provided from Nagle, which is to the north, and that's labeled Collector, shown in blue. And again, that little yellow extension of Yosemite is shown there. And as you see, that will connect at least surfacing to Rio Grande, but there's no street extension there. There's a lot there, so it's not, it wouldn't go through. During the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing for this proposal, there were some concerns brought up by the commission about the additional traffic that the subdivision might create at Betty Keever Grade School. You can see it there in the upper right. The commission did ask applicants if they would consider placing a wide crosswalk signal for that area. The developer replied that they would be willing to meet with city staff to discuss options. However, it has not been determined at this time if those improvements are warranted or necessary. There is a development agreement that's still required for this project, and at that time, the city engineer can look at some of these things and add those off-site improvements if he believes they're warranted. And again, the developer did say that they were, had willingness to meet with city staff to discuss potential off-site improvements. Next slide, please. No other necessary off-site improvements were identified that I know of that can't be addressed through the traffic impact fees, and those are paid, of course, at the time of building permitting on the individual lots within the approved subdivision. Traffic impact fees are used to mitigate and offset impacts of additional traffic on our entire system within the city. So, that's above and beyond those road improvements that the developer is required to make and dedicate to the city as part of the development themselves. So, for utilities and services, again, the services availability and capacity were reviewed by the City Public Works Director, City Engineer, for conformance with all of the city's adopted plans and standards. So, we have our water and waste water master plans. We have our, we have where we identify the expenditures for them and other plans of that sort. And it was determined the proposed development can be accommodated by the city services. As an example, the annual City of Postfile Water Reclamation Division Waste Water Discharge Capacity Analysis, which was provided in Exhibit F of the staff report, provided determination, helped us make a determination that there is capacity to provide for the proposed development. The developer will be required to pay for and build, again, all of the utilities, streets, et cetera, necessary to serve the development, including not lending to extending city water sewer veins to the property. And there are also fees for those to be paid at the time of development for the capital improvements, for system-wide improvements. Other services such as parks and police will also be addressed through those impact fees. So, at the time of development, those fees are utilized, again, by the city to mitigate the impact of additional housing and residents on city services to keep the burden on existing taxpayers low. Next slide, please. So, as always, I did provide an extensive analysis through a matrix for Rathrum City Code and Comprehensive Plan consistency. And it was determined that the project, the proposal is consistent with the code and the Comprehensive Plan. We did receive comments from some agencies that were included within Exhibit E of the packet, as well as some written comments that were provided by the public. During the planning and zoning public hearing, we also, they also received verbal comments from the public, and those were included in your staff report, the summary, as they were shown within the minutes from the P and Z meeting. And all of those comments and testimony were considered during the commission's consideration of this proposal. We did receive some additional comments since the time of the planning and zoning hearing. I mean, two of them were included within the Exhibit E in the staff report at the bottom, and those were both in favor of the proposal. And then, we sent Monday an email that included some additional ones that were received after the staff report was already sent. And those are available. We'd like to enter them into the record now. And those were all favorable as well. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did consider all the relevant evidence, all the code, Comprehensive Plan, et cetera. Next slide, please. And they do recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat. The commission also recommended as part of their motion that construction of Rio Grande Avenue to the north, up to Nagle, Nagle Road, should occur after the first phase of the housing is developed. And again, that's kind of a timing issue as far as what the fire district may require, that kind of thing. So, I have included proposed findings of facts, conclusions of law, and conditions of approval within the staff report to address their recommendations, along with other items that were discussed with the commission, for example, the traffic signal by Betty Keever. And that is my report. Do you have any questions for me, Mr. Mayor?
This was, excuse me, posted and published?
Yes. Yes, it was.
Mr. Deuce, do you have something to add to that?
Mr. Mayor and Council, normally a preliminary plat does not come in front of the city council as a public hearing. It comes as an action item, as we had at the last city council meeting. There was some current concerns that were addressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that it was not posted properly. I wanted to let you know what those were. One, this property does not have public access to it yet because Rio Grande has not been built. And so, originally, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we posted this on Lancaster Road, which is an adjoining property under the same ownership. It was not posted on the site. And the other concern was that there were individuals that live within the 300-foot notice requirement that did not receive a U.S. mail document, because when a title report is pulled on land, on ownership, it only came up with Golden Spikes. So, as a recommendation of council, Mr. Harrington said that it would be best if we moved this to the city council and have a public hearing on it and make sure that all of those notices and everything was posted accordingly. So, we had two postings note on the southeast corner and northeast corner of the property, as well as the Lancaster location, so we had three notices put in the ground, so to speak. And then, every resident within 300 feet was mailed a letter by U.S. mail notifying them of the public hearing. So, all of those things were addressed as well, so that we would have it properly noticed. And that is why you're seeing a public hearing on a preliminary plat in front of the city council.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, council?
Maybe just, I'm sorry. Mr. Hill? Curiosity. You've mentioned that when you pull addresses from the title company, I'm just curious, how does that work with rentals?
Rentals are not property owners.
So, they don't receive public notification? They don't have an opportunity to weigh in on?
Not by state law. Well, they have an opportunity to weigh in, mind you. So, by state law and by city law, it's property owners. So, rentals, no. But we still publish it in the newspaper. We still put it on our website. We still send out other notifications. So, state law generally requires that we post it in the newspaper. We send out a mailing, and we post it on the property. So, that's what we've done. In addition to that, we also have a portion of our website that has public notices on it that anybody can go to. We have an email program that people can sign up for. These public notifications for public hearing. And we just instigated, starting last week, our text feature that's on our website that people can go to and sign up for our public notices. And then, when we have a public notice of a hearing, then we send it out via text message now. Now, that is so new that there was only four people, including myself, that had signed up for that one. Not for this meeting, by the way. It was for another public hearing in the future, because this public hearing was posted 15 days ago, and we didn't have that feature available.
We also post in the T S out front.
So, there's other opportunities for people to get notified of the public hearing, and then it's open for everybody as they look at the agenda that we have a public hearing. So, if you're a rental or a renter, then you still have the opportunity to come in and speak or submit comments.
You just want to receive notification after the?
You won't get something in the mail.
And it was set up years ago when you could track by tax records who owned the property and notify them, but with renters, they come and go. It's impossible for anybody to.
And a lot of property owners for the rental things, they get noticed, but that, so that lot gets noticed, but it's usually sent to the owner of the property, which could be, you know, in Rathrum, could be in Coeur d'Alene, it could be anywhere.
Yeah. There is, there is a summary of all the postings and technical information in compliance with Rathrum City Code 12315 and 12316 that is included in the analysis within the exhibits.
Okay, so, that's your presentation. So, next on the list would be the applicants.
I have a question. Just a brief question.
Go ahead.
Carrie, can you explain to me what a hardscape fence, hard scape fence is?
So, it's the, it's rock or typically the, you know, the.
Seven blocks.
Like what's round?
Did you see the one that's on Lancaster?
I have not.
Okay. It's like that Radiant Lake?
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a brick.
A block fence.
Thank you.
So, that was our opening presentation from the staff.
I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You said fencing to the north. Does that include fencing to block that future road onto the adjacent property?
They, they can fence that now. I would assume that they would until there's some way to go through it. They'll have to put up barriers and stuff at the end of that road anyway.
There was a letter from, I believe, that property owner that expressed concern about a roadway dead ending, kind of like what you see on the neighborhood that's adjacent to the future Rathrum City Hall site. That there's a roadway that's there that's got road closed signs, but everybody rides their dirt bikes, four-wheelers, walks their dogs, dumps trash, tires, all kinds of things like that. But those are some concerns that that property owner seemed to have.
Yeah. So, the, what the applicant stated during the. Yeah, so, what the applicant stated during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was that they would be fencing the length of their western and northern property boundaries. So, that would include those road extensions.
And in a minute or two, it'll be up here when we got that. So, once again, that was the presentation by his staff. The applicant will come up and take their turn explaining to us why this is a good project, and then we'll open it up for the public, and you will have a chance to talk for this development, neutrally about the development or against the development. And then, the applicant will have a chance, if necessary, to rebut any of that. So, what is helpful is things that are directly about this property. Once in a while, we hear, "This is a good guy, they're a great guy," oh, they're, but it doesn't go with that, because the land could be sold tomorrow. We're dealing with a piece of property not being. So, try to stay, when you talk, relevant to the development.
True.
True.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmember Drew Gidman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue, the city of Coeur d'Alene, for the record.
Yeah, I just gave.
Really loud.
So, not a problem. Leanne's trying to pull up my presentation. Representing Big Creek Land Company tonight, Cliff Moore. I think most of you guys know who Cliff is and seen him, he did do the project to the south there, the Thayer Farms project. Cliff, I think, might get up here and answer some questions or speak in a minute. Let's see if this works. So, Thayer Farms North, as you can see there, is just north of the Thayer Farms project. I have no laser pointer, so, but it is at the extension of Rio Grande Avenue, as Carrie had indicated. Rio Grande does run along the eastern boundary of the Thayer Farms project. It currently is a half right-of-way, but there's no street built in it. That half right-of-way was dedicated with the Golden Spike project, and I believe the city has some funds in place for that. I'll talk about that in a minute. It's about 37 and a half acres. It's currently zoned R2. It has been zoned R2, and I have a correction here, because I believe the staff report had a typo in it as well, and I didn't check it and do it. But according to your fancy historical annexation map over there, and according to my recollection, this property was annexed in 1998, not 1993. I know that, because it was one of my favorite projects I worked on when I graduated college. So, it has been in the city for a long time. It was annexed and zoned as R2 property back then. I guess, to me, that would make it an infill project. It's not a new annexation. It's been zoned R2 for a long time and ready to be developed. You can see it's surrounded by residential property. You have the Golden Spike there to the east in red, which is R3. You have the Thayer Farms original phase, which was a PUD planning development that we brought in, which was zoned R1. So, the R2 fits, the R2 zoning seems to fit naturally there. Here is a copy of the preliminary plat, and again, I apologize, let's kind of turn your head sideways, because north is to the left in this circumstance. So, you can see Rio Grande is on the top of the subdivision there. And I guess I'll talk a little bit about Rio Grande. The Golden Spikes subdivision actually hosted a bond with the city, that the city is currently holding to construct their portions of Rio Grande. It didn't make sense at that time for the city to build it, because it didn't serve anything. So, the city is currently holding that bond. We have met with Carrie and Kevin and staff about getting together and building that road as one with this project. As a matter of fact, in the recent weeks, the engineer for that Golden Spikes has reached out to us, and we've communicated and shared notes on how do we get Rio Grande built from Nagle back to the original Thayer Farms with our project as one complete whole road? That makes sense to do. We're willing to do that. We talked about that at the planning and zoning meeting, and it's in the minutes from that meeting. It's the right thing to do. We're going to work with them. We'll work with Kevin and your city engineer, your public works director, and see if we can make that, make that happen. Again, it's 146 single-family lots. It is R2 zoning, as Carrie had indicated, which does allow for duplexes. We are not proposing duplexes. We are limiting this to single-family only, and that's in the conditions of approval, if I'm not mistaken. All of the lot sizes that we have proposed do meet the zoning criteria, so we're not asking for any exceptions nor variances. We have met with the school district ahead of time and have voluntarily agreed to donate $300 per lot to the Lakeland School District, as this plat is developed, even though that's not a requirement. We've agreed to donate that. I did talk about Rio Grande. Sewer and water is available. It's adjacent to the recently done sewer and water trunk lines that have run through that property that go to the new lift station over there. So, there is currently sewer and water available to the site. We will extend all the remaining infrastructure internally to make sure that everything is looped according to land, is done for city standards. Fencing, the fencing in this is brought up in the P&amp;Z meeting as well, but it'll be very similar to, if not identical, to what we did in the original Thayer Farms project. You see some of that CMU block, wall, whatever you want to call it. We also did a mix of some vinyl fencing in there, so you'll see that same combination of fencing continued. Make it easy. So, I've now rotated it, so it faces north like it should. So, Rio Grande is on the east. The two stub streets that join the neighboring properties, I had some extensive conversations with your city engineer during the development of this. You have caveats in your city code that require what we in the development business call "to and through," where we have to provide connectivity to adjacent landowners, so they don't become landlocked. So, those are not only proposed, but according to what Kevin and I discussed, probably required by your city code to provide connectivity to the future, future lands. Even though those lands aren't developed at this time, or there's not plans for them, your code requires that we provide connection to them, so that in the future, they could develop. Now, we will fence across those ends of those streets, as you had brought up, so people don't go through there. We'll have to work with Kevin, because we're going to be required, from a transportation traffic standpoint, to put signage and barricades up there, and, you know, all the public and stuff that we do. But we'll work with, with the staff on that and make sure that that gets done to your satisfaction. We have reviewed the findings of fact and conditions of approval that were in Carrie's staff report. I don't think we take any exception to any of those. Again, it's a fairly straightforward subdivision in our mind, so we'll answer questions if there are any.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hill?
Again, in this project, there is a letter from, or a memo that is addressed to Kevin Jeff regarding the sewer capacity post-farms reaching an 80% threshold. It looks like it's just a copy paste. It looks like the exact same letter.
It's the same one. We get those once a year.
Oh, okay, so it's the same document that's being included. To me, that again speaks to?
It's, it's not saying we're at 80% capacity.
I have thought, it's saying that we're approaching that. We're at a rate of 0.47 million gallons per year increase, is the average growth. And I believe that's not just Rathram, that's Rathram and both all combined.
All combined.
And that we're, with that calculation, we're within two years of exceeding 80%.
We shouldn't be within two years of exceeding that, because the next fall, there'll be a $1.5 million capacity increase that will be there.
At the current rate, and at the current capacity, we're within two years of exceeding what is, what is the current?
What is currently there. However, the 1.5 million is already?
It's not dollars, it's gallons.
That's gallons.
Yeah, and that's currently under construction right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it is.
And if I'm recalling.
So, it's not pie in the sky, maybe it'll happen type of thing. It's already started.
Then, we're currently, if I'm not mistaken, that letter said we're at 63%?
68.
68% capacity. So, we're not at that 80. They are currently upgrading the plant. That's been in the works for a long time. And as Leanne says, we get that letter. It's been, it was in the Brookshire project, and we bought it a couple of weeks ago, whenever that was. It's the same.
Gold plate.
Yeah, I didn't want to say gold plate, but it's the same, thank you, letter.
And I might add that the next increase of capacity, in addition to the 1.5 million, is already planned and staged. So, they, that's, Post Falls Sewer did a long-term planning study in when they would need to adopt it. And that's why we saw rate increases of 9%, 7%, and so forth down there. This was about six years ago that that started up, and that's because they were using those fees to prepare for the increase of capacity on these projects. So, the funding was received. It started the construction of 1.5 million, and the funding is currently being received on ongoing projects, so that it will also have the funding when it comes time for the next phase of increase of capacity. And it might be important to point out, that when Post Falls purchased the land, that they bought for the sewer treatment facility, they purchased land that was estimated at that particular time to provide sewer capacity for the entire Rathram Prairie. Not saying that the entire Rathram Prairie would be developed, but that it would be easier to buy land to cover that than it would be to say, "Oh, we need to build a secondary sewer treatment facility." And so, that, they went through a long-term planning to figure out how much land they was going to need, and how many times they need to increase capacity, and what the rates would need to be to do that. And a lot of that increased capacity comes from cap fees that are paid for at the time of building permit of these houses, and those cap fees go up pretty much every year. You'll see that in our fee increase schedule for this next hearing. And then, there are also increased rates to be able to meet the DEQ standards and other standards that have been raised as population increases. There would be higher standards that would be put on us. And then, also creating funding for land application and things like that. So, it's thoroughly thought out and prepared, so that the funding would be available when those different things, needs arise.
Anything else for me?
True, that's your presentation?
It is.
Do you have a question?
Who is going to pay for and build the western half of Rio Grande between Nagle and your property line?
That is already bonded for by the Golden Spikes, so they bonded?
Golden Spike is, has the eastern half.
They bonded for the eastern half adjacent to our property. They bonded for the full width north of our property, because they own both sides of roads. Their stormwater treatment is on the eastern half, so north of us, the bond that you have is for the full width improvements. Adjacent to us, it's for half width improvements. And I guess that our goal is to build the whole road all the way up to Nagle.
And that's your presentation?
I think so.
Thank you, sir. You'll get another chance.
Mr. Mayor, may I add, just for clarification on those Rio Grande things? The, the PUD that Thayer, not Thayer, sorry, Golden Spikes did, included both north and south of Nagle Road. And the trigger to build Rio Grande was when they started to build development north of Nagle Road. Now, there was a division between what is now Golden Spikes and Diamond Spikes, and the city council reviewed that and had to amend the Golden Spikes PUD to take out the northern section, which is now Diamond Spikes. And with that, the trigger was going to be lost in that whole process, because Golden Spikes would never start development to the north. In the amendment of the PUD for Golden Spikes, they were required to bond for the full north section of Rio Grande and the east section of Rio Grande, all the way down to the end of their property. And that the trigger point for that to be developed was any development to the northwest or south of that area would be a trigger point for the Rio Grande to be built. We've had development already to the south, so the trigger point of that amended PUD has already transpired. This is just an opportunity for two different entities to work together to keep the prices down on creating that Rio Grande road.
Any more questions? You're welcome for pointing that out to me. All right. Those who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this development. Seeing none, we'll move on. And, oh, excuse me, Sherry, did we collect any written that were in favor?
Not in favor.
Okay, you can hold them there, Leanne can read it, or you can read it, okay? When we get to it. Is there anyone who would like to speak neutrally about this development?
Mr. Mayor, point a word, the letters that were sent in and forwarded to us on Monday, do those need to be read into the record, so that then the public has an opportunity to be aware of their contents?
We can, for sure.
I have them available.
I'm just asking procedurally if that's appropriate.
We never have, but there's only a few of them, so.
Yeah, if you'd like, I could read these in for you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right. First one, Winter Cunningham. "It's good morning. I am unable to attend the city hall meeting tomorrow, in which the Thayer Farms North subdivision will be discussed. My vote would be in favor of the development. I think it would be great for the Rathram area. There is a need for housing in the region due to a large increase of people moving here. It would give people a chance to branch out of the Coeur d'Alene-Hayden area and get into a different part of the region. Rathram is going to boom with a new highway, and it would be great to have more housing for when it does. Thank you. Winter Cunningham, resident of Hayden, Idaho." Next?
Excuse me, Leanne?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for him to also read the professional association of persons submitting the letter?
I'm sure it would be appropriate or allowed, but I'm sure that this ends up in the record. You guys have all had access to it. You should be able to make a decision. This is basically so the people sitting here can hear who's the fours, I guess, because I think most of these are four.
Could I just give my opinion of the people who sit in these?
How about if you do it when they're done reading?
And, yeah, I caution you, Stephen, that we wouldn't do that on any other person that came up, because they wouldn't state what their profession is.
Okay.
Angela Erickson. "I am writing in support of a 146-lot subdivision named Thayer Farms North. I have reviewed this proposed location and believe that it, this appears to be a natural infill area for a subdivision of this nature. Responsible subdivisions like this one, which are adhering to all zoning requirements, should be encouraged. Adding additional inventory in appropriate areas could help slow the rate of inflated home prices that are outpacing our wages and help the city of Rathram with additional tax-based income to help fund the services needed for the face of this extreme growth. Thanks for your time. Angela Erickson from Coeur d'Alene." Wade Jaclyn. "Dear councilmembers, I am writing in favor of the approval of Thayer Farms North subdivision. This is a great infill project for the city of Rathram and will do well to assist the lack of housing inventory for our community. Big Creek Land Company monogram, and monogram homes are respected and high-quality entities that have proven over their many years that they do their best to ensure a high-quality product. This product will help continue the proper growth of Rathram with a neighborhood that we can all be proud of for years to come." Wade Jaclyn, 3764 East Nettleton Gulch Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Duffy Smock. "Hi, Carrie. Please find this email as my support of Big Creek Land Company Thayer Farms North, 146-lot subdivision being considered at the city council meeting on August 25th. This is a natural extension of an established neighborhood and will offer future inventory relief from an already..." and will offer future inventory relief from an already burdened marketplace. Should this neighborhood be developed, the increased inventory will bring, it will bring, will reduce the escalating pricing pressure on home buyers in our community. Allowing more inventory and in turn a reduction of pricing pressure may also give families current renting and purchasing opportunity. I fully support this Thayer Farms neighborhood. Thank you, Duffy. And Jennifer Smock, 867 West Prairie Avenue, Hayden, Idaho. Sean Anderson. Hello, I am writing to support the new development called Thayer Farms North in Rathram. We need more developments like this so that we can provide affordable housing for local residents that does not happen by limiting development or building. Thank you, Sean Anderson. Charlie Rens. I recommend approval of the Thayer Farm project. Thank you, Charlie Rens. And that is the end of those.
Okay, no, there were other written, but they came in earlier and they were already part of the record. These are, with what, part of the record. Ordinarily, I would ask, it didn't become repetitive, but those were all pretty short.
And I would have hated to have tried to shorten them.
I'm sure I would have got you in trouble. All right. Seeing no others that want to speak for, would anyone like to speak neutrally, I think I've asked that? Anyone against this development? Yes, sir?
Michael Fox, 13403 North Grand Canyon. As I stated in the plan of zoning, I'm not really opposed to the subdivision of the project. I don't think it's needed at this time. I think the Thayer Farms project right now has, it's hard to tell how many lots are still available to build down there. And I see no reason to start another project here when you haven't even filled out the first one. The cost of people in Rathram are going up because of this growth. And nobody seems to want to even talk about it, the sewer fee. I don't know why that's a fee that's added. We have development impact fees. And Post Falls is increasing the capacity. Why is that a fee to the customer? Why don't we use the development impact fees to pay for that capacity increase? If it's a fixed cost, it's not a, it's not an operating cost. It's a fixed cost to add that capacity. It would be if Rathram was doing or whoever doing, it should be a development fee and not a fee added on to the monthly fee of every customer. We've got people in Golden Spikes, they can afford $9 in one month, 15% increase. They're on a fixed income, every penny is accounted for. Now, we're talking about a fire district increase. And we are property taxpayers in Golden Spike. We own property and we pay property taxes at those addresses. So these costs are going up. And we're being told that our emergency response times, our fire response times, are suffering because of the growth. But yet nothing's ever done except they want to come in with a permanent operating levy to increase the cost for everybody. Rathram has a subdivision ordinance. Now, this is subdivision, not building, not, we're not talking impact fees or development impact fees or capacity fees or anything else. It has a subdivision ordinance. And the state law, state land use law that authorizes that subdivision ordinance for Rathram also says that each ordinance may, may provide for mitigation of the effects of subdivision of development on the ability of political subdivisions of the state, including school districts, to deliver services without compromising quality of service delivery, delivery, excuse me, to current residents or imposing substantial additional costs upon current residents to accommodate the proposed subdivision. I still understand, why does Rathram not have that provision in their subdivision law? It's allowed by law. It's what everybody is complaining about, is that the developers are not paying their fair share. But Rathram just wants to totally ignore the law. So if nothing else, I'm not, I'm not a no growther. I'm not saying stop this development, I'm saying slow it down until things can catch up with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mr., or Drew, do you have something you would like to rebut there?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, again Drew Dittman with Lake City Engineering. I'll address some of Mr. Fox's comments. He said that, not sure how many lots are available in the original Thayer Farms project. I can tell you that we are out of lots, we are sold out through this phase to the next phase. That's why we're moving forward with this project. We don't have any lots available. Emergency services, I believe there's a letter in the file from Northern Lakes Fire Protection District. They've reviewed the project and they've submitted a letter that's, it should be in your packet. As it relates to the subdivision ordinance and land, you can jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, development does pay for itself. We pay impact fees. Again, with this one, we've offered to pay the school a $300 voluntary fee that is not required. We've met with the school district ahead of time, talked about that and agreed on that number. And I just, I want to point out, and not picking on Rathram in any way, shape, or form, but Rathram has the highest building permit in Dooton County, if I'm not mistaken. That's higher than Post Falls, higher than Coeur d'Alene, higher than the city of Hayden. So we are paying in the development community to support that. We pay a lot of money in impact fees, park impact fees, sewer impact fees, transportation impact fees, land. Tell you the numbers, I don't know what they are off the top of my head. But it is a lot of money that developers do pay. We're also building a lot of infrastructure. You go back to the original Thayer Farms, we've built parks, we've built the Pickle Off Courts, we donated land. So we do pay, in our opinion, we do pay our fair share. We think we're doing right by the community, we think we're doing right by the people of Rathram. If you have any more to add, or if you have additional questions for me?
Mr. Ward?
If you have any questions, let me ask you.
Council, do you have any questions?
No, I think you did a good job.
Thank you, if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor?
Carrie, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I would just like to go ahead and on the record make those correction, make the correction to the staff report on page two under zoning, changing the date of 1993 to 1998.
Sorry.
Thank you for pointing it out. There's also another correction on page nine, under potential motions denial. I'd like to remove the words "Westwood Pines" from the staff report. Temporary error. That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the public portion, of course, is closed. Re-approval's done. I guess what we do now is we move on to 9B. Increased city fees more than 5%. It should be that are more than 5% or new fees. Melissa?
Mayor and Council, good evening. So every year, we look at the fees that the city are charging for the services that, you know, that we provide. And I get with all the department heads and we kind of go through, actually, we have them look line by line through every, every fee in their department to see how we're doing as far as if we're collecting enough to cover for the cost of a service. And so with that being said, this year, we had some proposed fee increases and new fees for the building department, planning, parks and recreation, public works, and our police department. So if we all would move to that second slide, this just kind of gives an overview of what the fees, you know, the principle of them. And for public services, they must be reasonably related but cannot exceed the cost of providing that service. So if you go to the next slide, we'll start with the building department.
No, Melissa, that's such an important point, could you elaborate a little bit? We're not making money on fees and we can't charge-
No, they have to provide, it's like an operational, they have to pay for the service that we're providing. So if we send out, for example, if we send out a building inspector to, you know, inspect a home or do a mechanical inspection or any kind of inspection, that permit needs to pay for their time and needs to pay for the staff time to review it, file it, all that interaction, we have to look at those fees each year. And, you know, we've done a pretty good job of keeping them low, sometimes too low. And that's what we do each year, is we find out, you know, if the time that's being put in pays for what we're actually doing. So it does take a little bit of time to kind of look at that. So, you know, and it's hard, right now, we're, you know, it's a very busy time for the city. And so I'm really proud of our department heads for doing that because it is hard to kind of break it down and look and see and kind of look at the workflow as well.
And so-
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, simply, fees are charged to break even for the cost?
Yes, yes, yes.
And are not, we're not generating-
No, we don't, we can't make money off of them, so. It's to pay for the service that we provide.
Thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting, I just, we've got enough people here, it's nice to discuss things once.
Okay, so moving on, we started with the building department. These are some proposed increased fee. The residential plan review, I'm not going to go through these, you know, I don't want to read through the slideshow, but residential plan review, we increased the speed to mirror what other jurisdictions are doing and to cover our staff time. So what our building inspectors do is, you know, as you can tell, building is going, you know, is happening at a pretty increased rate compared to the several years past. So we look to see where we're at with this. So we, right now, we're charging 10% of the cost of the building permit and the proposed increases to do 20% of the cost of the building permit, which calling around to the other cities and seeing the staff that it goes through, because it's not just one person that reviews these plans. So it goes, I believe it goes to the planner, goes to the engineer, and then to the building inspector. So that, they propose that increase for residential plan review. Mechanical permits, now this one, this, there's several different permits under mechanical permits. So there are things such as gas water heater, heat pumps, things like that, air heat exchange. So this, they went from $45, the proposed, to 85 because what they were doing is they were taking several trips out and they charging each time. So this is actually, this ends up being cheaper depending on if you put in a hot water heater and then, then you're going and doing some duct work and stuff like that. So when I asked him about this, because I said, you know, you need to explain this to me, he said, this is actually better because a lot of times they get charged for different things under mechanical permit. So one mechanical permit doesn't cover everything.
You said it doesn't?
Doesn't. So they were, the $85 is actually, you know, ends up being cheaper than what they were charged before if you do it for a fireplace and you do it for heater and then you do it for gas piping and-
So this, did you mean to say it didn't cover everything, or now it is covering everything?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, yes.
Every different-
Before-
So this new fee does cover everything?
Every single tiny thing was adding up. So he thought, they thought that this would be better, so it just, yes.
One fee covers everything?
Yes, I'm sorry.
With that, I mean, that kind of conflicts with the opening statement of impact fees don't make money, that if, if we're charging what it's costing us to perform the services, if we're making multiple trips, then the $45 seems like that's the appropriate fee to be charging. If you're giving them an umbrella, that $85 covers everything and we're still having to make multiple trips to do those inspections, but it's a savings because you only have to pay for the permit once, but we're still having to perform the same level of work and effort to do so?
Well, but I did ask him a little bit about that. And so before the way that it was, I have a list here that I don't think we have of. So, so for example, we have heat pump. We've got the evaporative coolers, we've got the type one hood. So they were going out before for all those things. They will, there are times that they have to go back. They do, they have to go back and look at something. But the way that this comes up is they try to do most of these things together. So when I asked Darren, our building inspector, about it, he said that he thought that this was better simply because they try to do it all in one visit. And if they don't, I don't think they charge them again if they have to go back out.
And I would think the 45 to 85 would be the number of things that need to be inspected.
Yeah.
There's some play in there.
Yeah.
There's cost savings that can go into place here. So instead of having like a water softener and-
A heater and a $30-
Heater and stuff like that. And you go out and you do one visit and you check all three of those, but you're also, you have three different permits for each one of them. You're going out there one time to check all three.
Yes.
Okay? So in that, you can do an umbrella visit, you go out there, you check all three at once and you're good. Now, if there's something wrong with any one of those items, we do charge a re-inspection fee-
Yes, yes.
That, that if we're forced to go out a second time because something wasn't right. So every time we go out there, there's ability to have another fee, but it doesn't make sense to charge three permit fees of $45 apiece when you go out one visit and you check all three items.
Couldn't I say the same thing about a property owner that's replacing my hot water heater? I have to pay $85 for them to come out and check that one item because the building department is in the habit of checking three items at the same time. And so now I'm having to pay what the builders are having to pay to check a entire house.
There's a separate line for that one thing.
So I think the swing from 45 to 85 is the number of things. Not every house is going to have a water softener. So if I'm looking at one thing, your overall fee is this, but if I have to look at three things, or four, or five, it's 85.
So, yes, so if you, if you have a gas water heater, you would pay 15. Okay? If you had multiple things, you buy the umbrella permit for $85 and get multiple things covered.
Well, 45 to 85.
45 to 85.
And the number of things.
But it says here processing fee for all permits. That line item is changing from 45 to 85. So the way I'm interpreting this is that this means that it's going to be $85 plus the individual item. Is that not right?
And that's a possibility, I don't know the answer to that question. We'd have to have a building official here to clarify that.
I don't get that impression. I know what it said, I can read, Mayor.
Well, and I can ask him, for sure. That's just how, it was explained to me and how understood it, but that is a good question.
And again, if there's a motion to approve the fees, you can subtract one of the fees out of it. There will be, just by the way, there will be one more public hearing on a fee increase because we didn't have the information available at this particular time. So we will have another one before the end.
You can bring it back.
Yep.
Perfect.
So moving on down to the residential re-roof with the tear-off. Same thing, we did do this to look and see what the time that we were spending to do that and the staff time. Apparently with, you know, the storms that we've had and stuff like that, this is happening more and more often. Okay, so these are the proposed new fees. Now, these, this was kind of interesting. So the residential window replacement, the re-side, those, again, are people doing, like remodeling things to their homes. Now, when I spoke with our building department, they said that we did not have a fee that this would go under. And so we are required by the code to require a permit for it, we just never had a fee for it. So, which was kind of silly. So those were the proposed fees. I do know that he called around to the other jurisdictions to kind of see what they were at. We're getting this more and more with, you know, people remodeling their homes, putting different siding on there, changing out their windows. So this is what they came up with with their staff time and how long it takes to do those type of inspections. The sign structure permit, this is a little different than what, kind of how we had it before. We've always had sign permits, but these are new. The over eight feet and under eight feet, we had quite weird descriptions before. So he did call around to the other jurisdictions and see kind of how they did it. So the over eight feet is $300 is what they're proposing. And the under eight feet is $200. And what they do still have in the, in there, they have a miscellaneous sign fee, which has been in there for a long time. I didn't put it up because it's not one that's increasing. So anything that doesn't fall into those, and I was kind of curious about that. I was asking, well, what would that be, you know, maybe a sandwich board or something? It's just something weird, something that's not norm, you know, not the norm. So if it doesn't fall into one of those two categories, I think that is a $50 fee for a miscellaneous or all other signs. So these two fees, the sign structure permits are for freestanding signs. The over eight feet are required engineering, under eight feet typically don't. Miscellaneous fee would cover something like a projecting sign that is- Miscellaneous fee would cover something like a projecting sign that is perpendicular to a building face, like on a bracket. It still needs to be reviewed to ensure that it's safe. So that would be miscellaneous because it's not freestanding. Okay, and moving on. Okay. Now this is a planning increase in new fees. So the public noticed advertising. This is one that I'm kind of surprised we haven't increased from a couple of years ago because advertising in the paper has gone up exponentially. We are required by state law to use the, the quarterly presses are official paper. And it is, it's very costly. We, the cities are their best customers as far as the legal sections go. So that increase was proposed from $60 to $140, which I can still say in some of the advertising with some of the development and planning stuff that we have, that's still not going to cover everything. But I thought, I mean, I agree that was a good increase because it is, it's very costly for the city to post those.
But on the average, 140 will be over some and under others so that we should net out as a zero.
That's what we're hoping, yes. The one and all are proposed new fees. The one up above in white, the advertising, is just a proposed fee increase. So the sign deposit, now this is fairly new and I, maybe I can ask here, you'll elaborate a little bit on that. It's basically a fee for the applicant to put up their signs in their area of their proposed project. We pay the cost of the signs and we'll hold the check as a deposit until the signs are returned. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is, of course, we pay to have those signs made. And they are, they're made out of a material called corex to keep them lightweight. They do degrade over time with multiple uses. The intent of this is to move the responsibility for posting the property from city staff that doesn't really have a lot of time to do it, over to the applicant. So we would get the sign prepared for them. They would come in and pick the sign up, give us a check for $50. We'd hold that check until they bring the sign back and then trade them. So that we get our sign back, as long as it's still in good shape and we can reuse it, we'll give them their deposit back. So that just helps to mitigate some of the costs of having staff run around and having to find materials and tools to hammer those things into the ground and maintain them, et cetera. So it would put that burden back on the applicant to keep the signs erected and in a good condition for the entirety of the contract period.
I like that. And the next one, the residential site plan review, single lot. This was added because, so there's a check for residents. If they want to construct something that doesn't require a building permit, like a porch or a shed, or if somebody has gotten a building permit and they want to make a change to it, it still has to be reviewed. For, if they already have the building permit, it will need to be reviewed again. The first one, we're seeing this, I guess the best example of this would be with people that build, build a shed or a porch or an outbuilding and go to sell their house and, you know, can say that it has been inspected, it's been looked at, it's been approved by the city.
Yeah, so we previously put something in place to allow this kind of thing. Basically, the residential site plan. What this would allow is that we, if somebody wants to put in a building, accessory buildings under 200 square feet or like they're going to attach a deck onto their house, which requires, still requires a building permit, that kind of thing. They can pay the site plan review and make sure that it meets all the requirements for the lot coverage, maximums, the setbacks, all that good stuff. Make sure they're putting in the correct place. The other thing that this will cover is that we get lots and lots of especially new development plans in, that come in kind of as blanket plans. The designer has not planned based on site conditions. So they get an approval after it's been through planning for site plan review and everything. And then the builder will come back and be like, "Oh, well, we can't put the driveway here and this there and that there. We want to change everything." Well, it's our time basically that we have to go back and re-review a site plan. So this just covers the, you know, just a minimal amount of time to re-review that.
I really liked this. Just, I think it's cheap insurance. Right now, utility buildings, 200 square feet. 10 years from now, it might be 150. Some code enforcement guy will show up and tell you, "You can't have 200 feet." And you can say, "Yeah, it's on file."
Yeah, absolutely.
10 bucks is a beautiful thing to have.
Yep. And it'll create a paper trail, not only for, you know, not only for the peace of mind of the people putting it in, but then it remains with the file. And you're right, if it becomes one of those enforcement things in the future where setbacks have changed or something else and we get another one of those big blanket complaints, like, "I want you to look at every shed in town," then we can actually say, "Oh, yeah, that was..."
Yeah, we got paper on it.
It's been reviewed and yeah, it was sound to be in codes.
Yeah.
But that's not a mandatory though. I mean, I do that on my own, for my own personal satisfaction, man.
Yeah, for accessory structures, it would be, it would be elective because you don't have to have a building permit. So, but it would be mandatory for like a resubmital of a site plan or something like that.
When Godfathering came around, you'd be in.
Yeah, with the grandfather, yeah.
Grandfather, yep. I love that one.
Me too. So moving on to park and rec department, increased fees. They have a lot of fees. A lot of parks, a lot of other programs. And so this, basically this year with the park reservations in all the parks, they have requested that they increase the fee, the rental fees for $10 for residents and non-residents. So that goes for the blocking of the four hours and the eight hour rentals. We're still cheaper than most every city around. I talked to Pulse Falls not too long ago. Actually, we've actually rented from Pulse Falls through our baseball club and stuff. So we still are the cheapest around, so...
Least expensive.
Yes, sorry, least expensive. And so that was, that wasn't really a big shock that that came forward this year. Recreational fees. Our recreational programs are amazing. We get kids from all over, not just in our own town, but from all over other cities, Kellogg, everywhere. And so the proposed fee increase for all the youth recreational activities is $5 for both residents and non-residents to cover the player costs. Field use fees. All fields, so our ball fields is basically what we're talking about, have been proposed to increase by $5. Tournament and season use fees increased by $25 for youth and adult teams. So that would be like a baseball team that maybe reserve the field for the season, which is typically three months, Eric? Three or four?
Four months.
Four months. So still, we are the most reasonable all the way around. In fact, we're getting teams from all over trying to come out here and use our fields because they are nice and they are very reasonably priced. So not, I wasn't really surprised with that at all. Ah, the mayor's golf cup tournament. So this proposed increase is from $280 to $300 per golf team. We're getting more teams that are participating. Not only that, it depends on what course we use for that. Some have a restaurant, some we have to cater. So that was the proposed fee that came forward from the Park and Rec Commission. Ball field lights.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So those funds are spent out?
Donated.
We donate them to a college.
Charities, yes, yes. Ball field lights. Now this one has been, this is a large increase proposed, but we can explain why. So our ball field lights that we have out at Majestic Park, when we put them in, we weren't sure how that was going to work, the cost, you know? And so Eric did a good job, but there was really no way of knowing what that was going to be. So we were severely underpriced compared to what we were being charged. We've worked with Kooten Electric. They have a demand charge that they hit us with, which is pretty significant. And I know council, we've talked about this before. So Eric did a good job of doing a bunch of research throughout the year for the different events, city events, events that we rented it out for. And so they're proposing the fee increase to go from $75 to $125 per field per day for lights. It's still extremely reasonable, you know, especially when you go to other areas like Corlan or Pulse Falls. So I still think we could have raised that a little bit more because we still don't know. We don't know. It's, Leon's going to do, we're going to do a utility audit because it's been really hard to get some direct answers as to why we get hit with that big charge. So... Okay, so public...
Do you have a question?
Oh, go ahead.
If you go back up to the previous slide, we're talking about fees and how they're associated with a cost to provide that service. I questioned the mayor cut how that one is tied to a service that's provided when it's funds that are donated, or if that should be as a part of a...
So it was what, a CSM, did you say?
If it's, if we're talking about increase of city fees in excess of 5%, is this really a fee or is this more of a volunteer donation type of event? Is it appropriate for it to be part of the city quote-unquote fees because the funds are donated and it's not...
Mike, yeah, it is. Because if we charge anything, regardless of what the purpose is, if that price goes up, it has to go through this process. So even if it was for, even if it was for a painting class and the instructor's fee went up and for us to raise it to match the instructor's fee, it's completely voluntary.
Right, but it's tied to a specific service.
It is. But this is kind of tied too to the fact that we have to pay for the golf course. We have to pay for the caterer. We have to pay for all these things. Most of the money that comes in through these fees cover those golf carts, the fees for the...
Lunch.
Golf carts, the lunch and so forth like that. A lot of the money that ends up getting donated is from the sponsors and we don't...
They donate, or they sponsor holes and they have little contests on the side.
So we're covering our costs to make sure that we don't...
Players buy mulligans and...
Just so that we don't get into the donations from the sponsors to cover the cost of the event.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Eric, how much did that give to Singer? Mayor's cut is what, 4,500 bucks to?
I think it was $4,200 that we donated this year.
To?
The, I forgot the spot. We donated to...
Christmas for kids?
No, no.
I know last year, last year they...
Was it to K-Tech?
Split the donation.
Thank you. I drew a line there. Yeah, K-Tech, new equipment for the K-Tech.
Good. And last year they split it in thirds to Little League, junior taco football and...
Like the Little League.
Yeah, yeah.
So this year it would have been tax money that would went to K-Tech. So we donate some of it.
So this next one, the public works department, this really is the only fee that's kind of coming forward. This is our sewer service base fee. So as many of you know, we are, we are partners with Pulse Falls with our sewer system. We send all of our wastewater over there. We are in an agreement with them. And so in that agreement, it states every year that there will be increased raises. And we pass this on to the customer, of course. And so that's why you'll see a sewer increase each year. It's not anything we really have much of a choice over. You know, we're not allowed to have our own sewer wastewater treatment program here. So every year we get a letter from Pulse Falls. We kind, we know what it's going to go up because we're in this long-term agreement with them. So this year, the increase, it's usually, it's almost $3 every year is what it's kind of worked out to be the last several years.
And I want to point out that the city of Rathrum share, which usually covers transportation and all of that, hasn't been increased for several years.
This is just the Pulse, the Pulse Falls portion that's passed along. Same thing with the sewer flow rate. So that is going from 11 to 1150.
And so back to sewer, we're still paying off for the improvements to reduce nitrogen. Does that still happen? It wasn't because of volume. It was because to eliminate the nitrogen out of the water that they were reintroducing.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, it was, just so you know.
So that, you know, that's our increase this year. If you go ahead and switch to the next slide, I'll show you. And then also as well, with the sewer comes a cap fee. So as been talked about before, you build a new house, you're going to pay a cap fee. This is not a fee that existing residents pay. This is new growth paying for itself. The city of Pulse Falls raised their sewer portion hookup from 3433 to 3570. City of Rathrum is not raising their portion. And so every year when we go through this, we look to raise that, and we haven't raised that in several years. So that again is something that they pass along to us, which we pass along to the developers.
Thank you. And once again, it wasn't strictly nitrogen, nitrogen and phosphates.
Well, going over to Washington, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was actually kind of a fun one. Police department never has fee increases since I've been here because they really don't have a ton of fees. So vehicle inspection or bin inspection. So this increase is due to documentation cost for the increased inspection. It's also, it hasn't been increased in 28 years. Yeah. I went back and researched this because I was, kind of thought it was kind of funny. $3 to $5. Anyway, so basically if you want to get a bin inspection, if you're selling a vehicle or buying a vehicle for that matter, you can go have the police do a bin inspection and run that, make sure it's not stolen, has, you know, a trash title, anything like that. So this is their one proposed fee increase for this coming year. Any other questions?
Questions?
You did a good job.
I have one. This is all the fees that are increasing, not just the ones that are greater than 5% because there's a lot of that that's on there that is less than 5% increase.
We didn't do it.
So if there's a fee that's increasing more than 5%, then, or less than 5%, apologize, doesn't need a public hearing. And then I don't think there was any fees that were increasing less than 5%.
11 to 1150.
That's in here for the public hearing.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying is that it's less than 5%. So I, so this is all the fees then?
That's all the fees.
Okay.
Okay, that's your presentation?
Yes, sir.
And once again, we'll go through the public process. Those that would like to come up and speak in favor of these public fee increases and new fee pricing. Those that would like to speak neutrally. Those that would like to speak against. Yes, sir?
Bill May, say you're here. Mike Fox, 13403 North Grand Canyon. I, I guess it's a question. What is the current residential sewer rate? I think the website, this year it was 60, or not, and this year it was 66. So it's 66?
It's 66.
Yeah. Right now I have the proposed fees up on the website. The proposed...
It's been 66 for sewer and $20 for water for a total of $86 a month.
66 to 69 again is, is less than 5% increase. I was, I couldn't figure out why it was on there. It was, it was on there.
That's one everybody sees, so it's nice to throw it out there.
What I saw didn't have the current rates. It just showed the new ones and the ones that were increasing over 5%. Okay. Then I have nothing to say about the sewer fee. What I would like to talk about though is the development impact fee. As I understand the way this works, these are not the capitalization fees or the connection fees for water or anything else for residential building permit. This is for the permit itself and it's designated as a development impact fee. And there's a formula in the, I guess the fees, the original fees were scheduled by some committee or commission that was set up, excuse me, to design those fees. And they're listed in an appendix L in the city code. And appendix L has what the value of a home is on the application. And the building permit fees or the development impact fees are calculated off of that, that value, that estimated value of the new home. For 2019, and this is... For two thousand nineteen, and this, I don't know those estimated values, I'm not sure who puts it on there, they're on the application, so I'm assuming they come from the builder. The builder says what the value of that, estimated value of that home's going to be. Two thousand nineteen, hundred-and-nineteen permits, and the total estimated value was thirty-point-four million. That, that's an average estimated value of two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. That, I don't think there's been a house built for two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand in Rathrum for a number of years. But in two, in two thousand twenty, same thing, two-hundred-and-twenty, or two-hundred-and-eighty-eight permits and seventy-three-point-four million, that's an average estimated value of two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. So the estimated value went down from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty for these homes. And that's the value that determines that, that fee. Those fees are set, were set by this commission, approved by the committee, or by the council. In the code that establishes those fees and how they're to be processed, there's a provision in there, and we'll, might want to look this up, it's Rathrum Code nine dash, dash, four, dash eight. It has an automatic inflation adjustment to that, and I don't know where, is that funny?
No, it's just that we just ran into the same thing ourselves.
Well, I just wondered why, I don't know how often that code, or that development fee has been increased, but it has the, the actual index, reference index, it's the engineering news record. I looked it up, and for August, those construction costs have increased eight-point-eight percent.
Yeah, you're right, and that's something, like I'm saying, that we just ran into that ourselves.
Mr. Mayor, just to throw out for you.
The fees, however, are not based on the value of the house.
Mr. Fox.
Based on the value of their impact.
So, Mr. Fox, I, earlier I had mentioned to Mike that we, if he denied a fee, we could add it to the additional public hearing that we were planning on doing at the end of September. That end of September is that impact fee because our staff hasn't looked up that value yet, and when we were made aware of that increase that was available, it was past the deadline to get the public notices out for fee increases. So that is why in the final council meeting of September, we'll have another public hearing on fee increases that would include that one. Now, state law governs it over this, we still have to have a public hearing on that, we can't automatically increase it, even though our city code says that we do. Anything over five percent has to have a public hearing. So at the end of September, we'll be having another public hearing that addresses the impact fees.
Okay. And has that ever been adjusted, like the code says it's supposed to be every year?
I, not in the last couple of years, no.
It's not every year, but it's, it's frequently, we have an impact fee committee together, and it's based on really the impact of each additional house to the park system, the highway system, and used to be the police, but I think that's all.
We closed the impact fee for police because of the.
We, we could never talk enough to do this.
Restriction of. The restriction to use it.
It's restricted for capital projects.
That's right.
Yep, and you have only eight years.
It has nothing to do with what you collect on here, for the fee, the fee.
The fees are based on the impact each house has on, say, the parks. Here is the value of the park, so when the committee meets, here is the value of the park system, here is that divided into each house, so each new house has to pay the appropriate share to cover the cost, so that they buy their way into the system.
But the fee is set by schedule, not.
Yes, that's correct, and that fee is established in schedule based off of the evaluation and the analysis of the impact fee study that goes on for transportation and parks.
But it's a set fee, it's not.
It's a set fee, and.
It doesn't adjust her.
Doesn't adjust her.
It, it, circulation is based off of trips, and park is based off of acreage, and.
The value of the acreage.
The value of the acreage. And every home that it's added, there's a formula that goes along with that.
Okay, then there will be some information come out on that, what the new fees are.
When we've got it all put together, we'll probably go for the end of next week so that we can make the public notice requirements for the additional impact fee increase.
Effective October fir-, is that when the budget?
Yes, October first is when the budget.
And the new fees become effective.
And that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and so we just stumbled into this inflationary process, we thought that.
Actually, it was Mr. Fox that brought it up at a previous meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Question, do you have a question, sorry? With us having a public hearing tonight based on impact fees for the next fiscal year, if approved tonight, wouldn't these things have to be reviewed again at the next public hearing?
No.
Because it seems disingenuous to the public to say that there's a public notice about a fee increase and only talk about that one fee increase, but there's all these other fee increases that have already occurred.
The requirement is to notify the public that there's a public fee increase, and that we can go to the website to see what the new impact fee will be. Once this is adopted, this resolution that is adopted, then those on our website will change, and then when we put a notice out again for the next public hearing on the fee increase, the only one that will show a reference is the development impact fees. So some cities do these fee increases multiple times throughout the year, we try to get them all around the time of the budget.
Well, thank you. Anyone else like to speak against? Seeing none, the public portion is done. Would the staff now like to do a follow-up?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think I followed up during our.
It was timely. All right, let's move forward here. See the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget hearing. Mr. Duce?
Mr. Mayor. Throughout the summer, since April, we've been working on the proposed budget. Just to give an idea to the public that's here, what that process has been, we've had workshop, several workshops throughout the summer on the budget, working on every single department, and presentations by those departments for their budget increases. In July, we approved a final draft budget for publication, that publication was made with the notice of our public hearing. We also ran into a situation where, back in April, we set this public hearing date for August eighteenth, which was last week. However, since that date of setting, or since April of setting the date, the state legislature passed a new bill that changed the property tax formula. And because of that and the dates that we were getting our information, we were unable to complete the budget because of that in a timely manner to have that August eighteenth meeting. So we published in the newspaper, as required by state law, that we were changing our public hearing date to August twenty-fifth, and that leads us to today. Our proposed budget, we've had a couple of changes to our budgeting process this year. First is that House Bill three-eighty-nine that I mentioned. I want to point out that the, normally in the process, and I'm saying it more for the public rather than for the council, because they're already aware of this, before, new growth would come in at last year's levy rate, and that would be growth paying for itself and adding to the property tax bill. This year, the city is only allowed to take ninety percent of the value of that growth and use it against a estimated current-year levy rate. So that changes everything quite a bit. One point that I've got in another slide, our value of our property here in Rathrum went up one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars in one year, assessed value, so that changed the levy rate quite a bit and lowered that levy rate. So with the combination of the two things, we would have used about a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars of new growth taxes to come into the budget, where with the new legislation, that reduced it to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so there was a reduction there. The city this year is not budgeting every dollar that is in the financial statements for the city. To find out what the financial status of the city is, we recommend to look at the monthly financial statements that are published in the packet and available to the public. And then this year also, we're taking a lot of our one-time purchases, like a de-icing truck and some of those other type of items, and we're pulling them out of the fund balance rather than making the existing taxpayers pay a higher tax to purchase those items. And that fund balance comes from year-over-year savings that builds up within that fund balance because we try not to spend as much as we budget. Also changes over last year, the market value, like I said, for the City of Rathrum went up about a hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars. Taxes have not been increased for four years, other than new growth money. In two thousand eighteen, we had a one-point-ninety-two percent property tax increase, and there hasn't been an increase since then. We have four-point-seven million dollars in savings for a new saving, city hall. This savings is.
Sorry, would you elaborate a little bit about the, there are some people that don't know about taxing authority and three percent.
Okay.
When you say no new taxes.
Right, so the city is allowed to take a three percent property tax increase plus new growth, which is new construction and annexation. The new construction and annexation has a value, they haven't been taxed priorly, prior, so you are able to use a levy rate to figure out what those taxes might be for that new growth and add it to your budget. Therefore, the value of the dollar doesn't keep diminishing every time you have somebody build a new house or things like that, so it's meant to keep it level and stable.
And we're allowed three percent, and we haven't done that in.
And we're allowed three percent in addition to that. Matter of fact, our records show that since two thousand eight, the city has never taken during that time period, a full three percent increase in property taxes. There has been some one percents, there's been some less than one percents, a little more than one percent, but never more than two percent. Okay? Anyway, on the city hall, the new city hall, the city has actually been saving money for this rather than bonding. When you do a bond, you get the amount upfront, and then you pay an interest rate on that bond, just like your mortgage payment. The city's actually saving the money, putting it into an investment pool account that the state does, it's legal by state law, and we generate an interest on that money, and then that will help to pay for a construction of a new city hall. This is better than bonding, because if we bond for the full amount, then the citizens have to have an increased tax burden, and they have to pay the interest rate on that bond for the life of the bond. The levy rate just over the last five years has been reduced from point-zero-zero-five-seven to point-zero-zero-three-four. Again, this is a combination. One, the city's not increasing the property taxes every year, and two, the market value of the housing has been going up. So there's two things that, that contribute to that. Our building permits this year are actually down. We were at this time last year, August seventeenth, at a hundred-and-seventy-eight single-family residential permits, this year we're at a hundred-and-six. We're also doing some major road projects, starting Monday this next week, there'll be construction on the Meyer fifty-three intersection, there will be a traffic light that will be there. Okay? And then on the Meyer and Baker roundabout, we are shy one of five parcels to complete the purchase of that roundabout, and then we can start scheduling construction. We're really hopeful that we would have that completed and start construction this summer, but one property owner has not sold their piece to make that happen. Here's the tax history, like I talked about, zero percent increases from nineteen to twenty-two. Here is our general fund revenue, budget, actual in nineteen to twenty, budget for twenty to twenty-one, only because twenty-twenty-one is not complete yet, and the twenty-one to twenty-two proposed budget. Again, these numbers were reviewed by the city council quite extensively over the summer. Do want to point out, there's a major increase in the shared revenue. Our budget last year was almost one-point-three million, and that's gone up to one-point-six. A big part of that, you'll see the actual in the previous year, was up to one-point-five million. The big reason for that is a change in the revenue sharing formula down at the state. For cities that were getting less than an average per capita for the entire state, they got bumped. Rathrum is less than the average per capita, we got a pretty big bump on that, and that will continue until the point that we are at average, and then we'll only see a one percent increase until everybody is at average. Projected-wise, it's going to be ten, fifteen years before we're even close to that average amount. The enforcement services, notice the budget went from sixteen-thousand-five-hundred last year to ninety-two-thousand this year, this is a revenue line item. Most of this is due to the fact that we have a MOU that's also on the agenda tonight, that the school district will pay for sixty-five percent of salary and benefits for an SRO, School Resource Officer. And then the rest of the funding's as shown there. Expenditures, want to point out that the mayor and council pay actually had an ordinance that was passed at the last council meeting. This proposed number reflects the, what was adopted at that meeting for mayor and council pay. The finance and administration budget, there was an increase of about sixty-one thousand dollars, that's the finance and administrative share of a new city attorney. Law enforcement has an increase, there are some other things that they've got for equipment, but also that SRO they're paying for, and the thirty-five percent of that new SRO for the benefits and salary. Public works saw some increase. Planning and zoning saw some increase, engineering actually saw a decrease, and the building department has an increase as well. To note, though, kind of shared between public works and building and planning and zoning engineering, all of that, somewhere in the works there is the new build, public works inspector position that was authorized by the council through the budgeting process, so that's included in there as well. Streets, an increase there. Parks and rec, this is a little bit of an increase. Parks, just a small increase, cemetery, just a small increase, recreation, some as well, other expenditures a bit. And then the transfer to capital projects went down quite a bit from two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand to thirty thousand. That thirty thousand is for equipment with the police department. Okay? Our designated revenues in capital projects, this is one of those points that I made before, we're not budgeting for everything. There is some emergency funds that are available, almost a million dollars, we're not budgeting to expend those, if we do have an emergency, we'll open up the budget and add those in. Capital projects is the thirty thousand that we've talked about. Special revenue funds are the park impact fees and then our cemetery funds. And it's currently the policy that city, all funds are placed into the budget, and the purpose of this policy is to be transparent to the budget. We did tweak that a little bit, but the circulation impact fees, we are budgeting a hundred percent of that because of the big road improvements that we're doing and the funds that we use for that. And I didn't update that second bullet point, but we'll. So the revenues for this, two million dollars in our special revenue funds with expenditures of two million dollars. That also, just by the way, I want to point out for the public that's here, we did budget through the parks impact fee to spend up to five-hundred-thousand dollars for a purchase of a new city park. Our enterprise funds, our water funds and our sewer funds, our capital funds for those water and sewer, and some of these projects require savings for multiple years. I'm going to skip over that slide, it's repeated the other. I'm going to skip over that slide, it's repeated the other. I want to point out here that the revenues projected to receive is $5.4 million, but we're only budgeting to spend $2.1. That's what we plan on spending. The difference between those is what will go into the savings in order to provide for bigger projects in the future. So there would be a possibility that we would see revenues plus fund balance for an expenditure that would be higher than the revenues retrieved, received in one year to pay for big projects. We also anticipate throughout the course of the year, as we decide what we're going to do with the ARPA funds, that we would reopen the budget to address that. We did receive a little over $900,000 in ARPA funds, but those are restricted for infrastructure projects. So they cannot be used to offset property taxes. They're not a revenue replacement fund. They can be used for broadband. They can be used for water or sewer infrastructure projects. They could have some use for assisting with households and nonprofits and those type of things, but you'd have to go through a grant application process in order to do that. So we're looking at that, and once we decide how we're going to do that, we'll reopen the budget to take care of that. But we do have four years to spend those funds, so it's not a rush to get those spent this year. Okay? And that is the end of the budget presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council, you have any questions?
Just a good job.
Okay, so once again, we'll go to the public portion of this. Those who would like to come forward and speak in favor of the new budget? Those that would like to come forward and speak neutrally? Those that would like to come forward and speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. It doesn't look like you really have anything to re-
No rebuttal, Mr. Mayor.
Rebuttal. Okay. So we'll move on to the 2021-2022 forgone revenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deuce.
By state law, this is another one of those changes happened in the last couple of The city has the ability to use a 3% property tax increase. In the past, if you did not use that, you could allocate that 3% increase to a forgone. This isn't a bank account. This is not money out of anyone's pocket today, but it allows the city at some point in the future, if there is a need, to reach back and use those dollars that were allowed to be levied but were not levied. So now, you have to have a public hearing in order to talk about whether or not to allocate this 3% increase to the forgone account. Again, this is not dollars that are in a bank account. This is the ability to tax the public. So the 3% increase that would be allowed this year equals $92,348. If it is the intent of the city council to move that to forgone, you must pass a resolution. So we're simply stating that this is a possibility. The staff is not making an opinion one way or the other, whether we should or shouldn't, but it is up to the council to decide whether or not we should or should not reserve these funds for a future use to be, to the ability to tax the public.
It's a future ability to tax, just as you said.
Yes.
Since it's a short one, can you give us a quick history? Times that the city has used forgone taxes?
We have only used forgone taxes once.
I know.
And they, at that particular time, the city was charging a fee for streetlights. That's fee went to everybody. Since that time, there have been court decisions to determine if it was an unfair tax rather than a fee. Because if you look at a street corner, the people that live on a street corner, they have a streetlight that lights up their yard and the street in front of them. You go four houses down the street, there is no light that lights up their yard other than their house lights that they're paying their own electric bills on. And so therefore, it was decided that that could possibly be a unfair tax rather than, or a tax rather than a fee. And so the city removed the fee from every individual residence and increased the property taxes by a sum of $80,000. That was a forgone fee. I might point out too, that on that particular year that the city adopted that forgone, they did not take the 3% increase, they took a 0% increase on that year, so the only tax increase was the forgone to offset the-
Streetlight.
-streetlight fee. So it was a wash as far as that was concerned. What that equated to, for some houses with a low property value, that meant that they were paying less than the fee, and then for some property values with a higher property values, they were paying a little bit more than the fee. But that's how taxes go.
Okay. All of-
Just because we set aside a certain amount of forgone money doesn't mean we have to go and get all of it when we-
Correct.
-need money.
Matter of fact, the state law changed this year. So what has happened is, for example, the city of Boise needed a new fire station. They had, they, fire is one of the departments. And so they took the forgone and put it into their property tax budget to build a fire station and to put the equipment in it. So they took all that forgone at that one particular time. State law changed with House Bill 389, the one that we talked about earlier, that would only allow a city to increase their property tax by 1% using forgone. So there's a very big limit on that. The other option is they could raise their property tax by an additional 3% for a capital project using forgone. However, when that capital project has been completed, then that money would go back to forgone and would not be added to the base.
Okay.
So even today, there is a very huge limitation on the ability to use forgone. 1% would probably be pretty close to about $30,000. So of the forgone that we have in there, it would take a long time for us to use up the forgone. I do not have a current forgone balance, but I could probably look that up.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. 10A.
Mr. Mayor, we have to do a public hearing process.
I know nobody's going to want to talk about this, but I'm going to ask you anyway. Would anyone like to speak in favor of, I guess, withholding the forgone, or taking, it's not actual money, of reserving the right to tax the forgone amount?
Yes.
Seeing none, we'll ask, would anyone like to speak neutrally about that? Would anyone like to speak against it? Once again, seeing none, we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Give me a five minutes, please.
We can, here's the danger. Don't talk to anyone because we just had four public hearings. All right, so we'll take a break, but you have to understand, we cannot discuss these things with you.
At all.
I can keep on the air if it is soon to be started.
Oh, God!
It's just me asking.
Oh!
I'm going to have to get water.
I thought she was going to go for you.
Yeah.
See, why don't you say please?
Say that twice.
Yeah, I'm like, what's the basket?
Melissa, like, right.
These would go a lot faster, Vic, if you figured out a way to sell them.
I would pick that, we'd pick this one.
It would seem to go quite fast.
It wouldn't be enough.
We're not allowed?
I feel better already.
Thank you, Stacey. So glad.
He's got a journal.
Charles Lisa.
Well, that already here.
Good. Still waiting for that letter of reference? I'm ready to write it.
Okay, I'll just have to talk to you.
Again.
So first football game's Friday night?
Yes.
Here?
Soccer. Soccer, so that's football.
Yeah, get those squared away.
I'm not 100% fair.
Zero hours, is that what they call it, your games before the first day of school?
Exactly.
I don't know if that's what they call it.
It's like the week before.
We're always before school starts, so the rest of the states-
Well, you may have such a strange-
I'm well, how are you?
I'm going to run out to my car.
That could be a problem.
I know. Yeah, it's been a while since the board told me.
Somebody wants the air mattress.
I'll take a cheeseburger, too.
I'm going to do the, I'm going to do the one here.
Are they up here? Carrie, do you see my keys in there?
Wait, wait.
It's a taxi.
It looks like we got our four, but we missed Melissa and Melissa.
Melissa, but that's okay, we got the preliminary class. We can do that.
Let's go to 10A. We're back in session. And this is an action item. Consideration of Thayer Farms North Preliminary Flat. And I'm guessing it's Carrie, yeah? But it's strictly a yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is the council's opportunity to consider the evidence and the testimony provided in order to make a determination about this proposal. If you want to, I can bring up the PowerPoint again.
Sure. I think I closed it all the way up, but I'll pull it up.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, there it is.
So we go to a, yep, that's the one. So the language is set for in the staff report, and as here on the screen, is provided for guidance with no text suggesting specific action, but there are some options to approve with recommended findings, conclusions, and conditions of approval as found in the staff report. There's the option to add further conditions of approval. There is the option to approve with no conditions. To deny, in which case you need to cite the code sections that provide the conclusions of non-compliance with code. And you may also return the flat to the Planning and Zoning Commission for modification. And all those findings, conclusions, and conditions of approval were included in the staff report. I can go over the conditions of approval real quickly if you'd like me to.
I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor.
Correct.
I was just wondering, that letter that Mike had asked about, about the dead-end road, that, what did we decide on that? That you said that there's going to be a fence across there?
Yes.
That dead-end road?
Yeah, that was the testimony provided, that there is a fence there.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to interject real quick. Are YouTube videos stopped at the two-hour mark like I warned you about? And it is currently being recorded, and so we will upload the full video then after the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Can you get your answer?
Yeah, was it, that's, is that already included in the conditions of approval?
It was not specifically in the condition of approval, but we can add that language if you'd like to, to number one, that discusses the development agreement with the city of Rathrum. We have some specifics in there for addressing timing of construction on the north end of Rio Grande Avenue, and the possibility of including provisions for a light crosswalk signal on Naval Road and Bay Harbor. If you'd like, we can provide, as a language, provide for fencing across road extensions at the northern and eastern property lines.
So we still have to put that into the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Can I throw one monkey wrench in here?
Yeah.
So this letter is from one resident that lives, I believe, in Golden Spikes.
No, that lives to the north, I believe.
Okay, but in the area, what about the people-
There's the option to add further conditions of approval. There is the option to approve with no conditions. To deny, in which case you need to cite the code sections that provide the conclusions of non-compliance with code. And you may also return the plat to the Planning and Zoning Commission for modification. And all those findings, conclusions, and conditions of approval were included in the staff report. I can go over the conditions of approval real quickly if you'd like me to.
It's up to you.
I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering. That letter that Mike had asked about, about the dead end road, that when did we decide on that? You said that there's gonna be a fence across there?
Yes.
That dead end road?
That was the testimony provided that there is a fence there.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to interject real quick. Are YouTube videos stopped at the two-hour mark like I warned you about? And it is currently being recorded, and so we will upload the full video then after the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Can you get your answer?
Yeah, was it? That's, is that already included in the. The conditions of approval?
It was not specifically in the condition of approval, but we can add that language, if you'd like to, to number one. That discusses the development agreement with the city of Rathrum. We have some specifics in there for addressing timing of construction on the north end of Rio Grande Avenue. And the possibility of including provisions for a light crosswalk signal on Naval Road and Bay Harbor. If you'd like, we can provide, as a language, provide for fencing across road extensions at the northern and eastern property lines.
So we still have to put that into the motion?
Yes.
Can I throw one monkey wrench in here?
Yeah.
So this letter is from one resident that lives, I believe, in Golden Spikes.
No, that lives to the north, I believe.
Okay, but in the area, what about the people that own and operate Golden Spikes? What are their feelings?
Um, it wouldn't affect Golden Spike. Because the only, the only road that's there now is the West Yosemite, and it's already fenced. And again, this proposal doesn't include any changes to that unless the fire district decides that they want to have another access into Golden Spike or to this new development, and they want it opened up. If that's the case, then we can look at options like putting up a Knox block so it's not, it's not an open throughway.
Okay, understanding all of that. Could this decision be made at a, there'll be several more steps in this process.
Yeah, there is a development agreement.
So do you be proper to put it here? Would be proper to listen from the fire department first and then put it in final plat, or?
Yeah, so that one in would be the fire department. I would think that would be appropriate way.
So it'd probably be better to make that. And I understand what Daryl's getting at, because if that's his feeling, he wants it in here. But are we gonna do that, and then the fire department's gonna come back and say, oh, God, no, you have to have that? Should we wait until later? That's my question to Daryl.
Mr. Mayor. Sir, I have similar concerns as Daryl has, and I was gonna mention this, too, is that on Prairie Avenue near, is it Sunset Meadows? That they have some, like the, I think it's Garden Grove addition that has some roads that, that go out to Prairie, but they're blocked off with like a wrought iron fence, and they got a Knox block on them, too. So then it does provide fire department access to that area for emergency access if they so, if they so need such access from either side. It eliminates the vehicle traffic traveling through Golden Spikes that, where people might wanna, or be tempted to shortcut through that area. Is there an option, if we were to make a proposal, that that be part of this recommendation is to include it, that that could at some later point be removed, either the requirement or the actual fence later on that, you know, two years?
So can I jump in real quick? On Yosemite, no, because Yosemite is not part of this project. So Yosemite is a completely different subdivision. And that's not under consideration, only the preliminary plat for this subdivision. Now, if you wanted to talk about whether or not the streets that end to the north of this subdivision, or to the west of this subdivision, or to the south of this subdivision, yes, you could make comments regarding those, because that is in this application. Yosemite is not.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
We have the ability, as you suggested, to wait to add that information into the, when the final plat gets presented to us, correct?
Or even the development agreement.
Yeah.
The development agreement is, is the one that it would be added to, and the city council has to approve the development agreement.
See, I have a fear that a hundred more people come in and say, oh, God, no, I wanna access.
Well, right now, the developers have said that they're gonna put in a fence in there. And we.
Huh? To Yosemite?
No, no, because Yosemite's not their project.
What are we talking about now?
We're talking about the north and the east.
Okay, north and west?
Yes, sorry, the north and the west. They're saying that they'll fence those.
Okay.
Okay? The, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the letter that talked about the dead end street was to the north. They're saying they'll put a fence in there. We can put that in a verbiage of the development agreement. We do not require by city code that fencing of subdivisions. They have offered that, so therefore you could make it in the findings of fact and conclusions, but the development agreement is when they say, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z in this development, and we have the ability to put it in there.
When is the development agreement coming before us? Because there's, this is preliminary plat, and then we get the final plat, and then.
The development agreement comes in before the final plat.
It comes before council?
Yes. And that's up to, I mean, I'm not saying you can't do it one way or the other, I'm just giving you information.
No, the, the development agreement is an agreement between the city and the developer that's a mutual decision. If you want to make it a condition of approval that they must fence the, their property lines, then you need to find code to support it, and we don't have any.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either.
If, if you want to condition that they must have fencing around their development, you have to cite the code section that requires that, and we don't have a code that requires fencing. They volunteered to do it, they stated it during testimony.
So that can be stated as a, as a finding of fact and conclusion, meaning a supporting element, right?
No, the, the finding of fact would be the code section that would require them to have fencing. The finding of fact would be that you find the factual evidence that they need to have that fence, and then the condition would be they put in fencing.
There was a motion that was made here recently regarding a donation of, of land to a fire district. It's not a requirement of city code, it's not a requirement of that preliminary plat.
No.
But yet it was still a finding of fact that the developer has volunteered.
They volunteered.
To do this.
Uh huh.
To do X, Y, Z. So the fence on the record that says that this.
Yeah, you could do, you could do a finding if you wanna do a finding of fact that they volunteered to do that.
That's, that's how it was.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I'm trying to communicate to you is that's what I'm asking. And then the one other question, you know, I really strongly support and, and the, the concern about Betty Kiefer, and I'm a big fan, it doesn't sound like it was a traffic plat, I was envisioning what was, what was being discussed as something more like one of those crossing beacons.
The flashing crossing.
And I don't think that it's, my opinion, I mean, I'm trying to have an open discussion here with fellow councilmen, is that it's not this development necessarily that's causing the issue, or, but is contributing to it. Is there a way that we could work with the developer to partially fund the addition of a, of a crosswalk beacon, so the city can front up some, and that the developer somehow contribute to that addition of the light, of, of what was a little crossing beacon?
Yeah, so that's, that's what was discussed during the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. And the developer did volunteer to work with the city to do that, to find a solution if it's warranted. So really, that needs to go through review with the city engineer to find out if it's warranted to put in that kind of, of light. And then if so, that the city may work together to provide that, and that would be done through public works and city engineers. But that language is included in recommended condition of approval number one, where we talked about the development agreement. So it may also address.
What pages?
Light and crosswalk signal on Naval Road.
What page is that?
That is on page eight of the staff report, under condition, recommended condition of approval, number one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready to make a motion if there's.
I have a question.
First.
This is from Leon. When is the signal at Lancaster and forty-one, and Nagle and forty-one gonna be in?
Prior to fall of twenty twenty-two.
That's the closest you can make it?
That's, we have no control over that. That's when they say the project period is going to be over, and therefore it could be as early as April, but it could be as late as November. But that's not, that's the state's project, so we don't get to control when those things are done.
I could also see delays.
Yeah, but what we're also looking at here is a preliminary plat, so.
Right, well, I'm concerned this, because they don't wanna break ground any day. They say fall twenty twenty-one, which is today, or tomorrow.
That's correct, but that doesn't mean break ground for building houses. They have to put in streets, they have to put in water and sewer, they have to build out Rio Grande, they have to do all of those things, and then it has to have, you know, your development agreement, you have to have your final plat. All of those things have to be done before you can get one permit to build a house.
The development agreement will come before they break ground for any improvements. Public improvements are covered in the development agreement.
Okay, so just, just from a safety standpoint, I'd like to see those signals in before they start building houses.
I understand that, but we can't require it. Because that's not part of our city code. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, I do make a motion. With that, I'm available.
I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation, finding, conclusion, and conditions of approval. I'm sorry, I move to approve the preliminary, preliminary plat with the recommended findings of fact, conditions of law, and conditions of approval as found in the planning commission's recommendation in staff report, finding that is in accordance with city staff, the city of Rathrum comprehensive plan and Rathrum city code as condition, additional conditions of approval. I further move that the following additional, it's not a condition, finding further fact that the developer has volunteered to fence the, the road stubs to the adjacent properties to the north and west.
North and east, sorry.
North and west.
West, sorry, my bad.
I'll second that.
Motion made, so any further discussion? Cherry, if you would.
Is it green?
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Daryl Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
No.
Motion passes. Moving on. This is B, this is also an action item, consideration adoption of city fee or resolution. Denied?
Mr. Mayor, this is the resolution that has been presented to the city council through a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Ricker?
Before you do, I have one comment. If I could encourage the mechanical permit to be tabled until the next public hearing to have additional information about that at E.
Mr. Mayor, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Go ahead.
I hope next year we can double the fee for dog pickups by the police department. I think the fee schedule is way too low. Too many dogs have been picked up recently, and we need to get serious about people being responsible for their pets.
Fees can only be what the cost is thus, though, it isn't a social remedy for things.
I understand.
But we can look into that, see if the cost, if the fee currently matches the cost, and if it doesn't, we can address that at another time.
Yeah, and I can, we're gonna have things, I'd add finger paint to that, too. I think we charge ten bucks, or eight bucks, and it's pretty. Take some time.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, I think.
Go ahead, I've tried to.
I would like to move that we approved the resolution of the city of Rathrum for the fees for services with excluding the mechanical fee to be tabled when we get our information held for the next. Public hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion made, and I guess pick your seconds. Any additional comments? Cherry, if you would, please take her own.
Daryl Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye, thank you.
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, C, this is also an action item, consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance.
My, Mr. Mayor, that this is an ordinance, and we'll have to go through the ordinance process. And I believe Melissa is giving you a motion sheet, or are we just using the other one?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, this is the annual appropriations ordinance to adopt the budget for the city of Rathrum. The total of the sum of the budget was ten million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen. Also, things to, the ordinance does estimate the expenditures, but the most important thing I wanna point out is that it addresses the tax levy to be in the amount of two, three million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven. That information will be put on L two, sent on to the state, uh, county, so that they can do that, and this ordinance is then presented to the council.
Tell them, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make, make a motion that the ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one. Is that all I need?
Yes.
And be placed on its first reading by title only, under suspension of rules, and to waive its second, third reading.
I'll second that.
Motion made, and second any further discussion? Cherry, if you would, please.
Daryl Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye.
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
Aye.
An ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one, appropriating the sum of ten million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars to defray the expense and liabilities of the city of Rathrum for said fiscal year, authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriation is made.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made, second any further discussion?
And to publish, what we need to have, to publish by summary?
Uh, we're gonna publish it in full.
Okay.
And we're back to publishing entirely, is that lucky? That's where I was trying to drive last year.
It was recommended, and we're gonna do it.
New attorney? Okay. Cherry, please take her own.
Daryl Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye.
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
Aye.
Before I say motion passes, did we waive the second, third reading?
We did, that was the first motion.
I wanted to be sure of that, because these are long. That would be like three days to read this thing.
Exactly.
Motion passes? It's not, it's not a spelling, you have to sit here through it, too. It's not as pretty as it looks. Uh, let's take a look here. D, consideration of resolution to reserve the foregone amount for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, this is the resolution that must be passed by state law in order to reserve the foregone, the foregone amount for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to deny the resolution to, to waive the, the foregone taxes, not to, not to hold them.
Not hearing a second, are there any other motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to reserve the foregone amount for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two for use in subsequent to your years as described in the article.
I'll second that.
Motion made, and second any further discussion? Cherry, if you would.
Daryl Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Lisa? Moving on, E, an action item.
No.
Not for a resolution.
Resolution, not at all.
Okay. Consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the Leclan School District for a school resource officer as our.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start this out, and then if Lisa has, if the board has any, or the council has any questions for Lisa, she's here to comment on those, if it may be. This is, we've talked about this, we've brought it forward to you. This is, uh, we've talked about this, we've brought to, forward to you a, um, M O U. This was based off of the M O U for the school resource officer from the Kootenai County Sheriff's Department. We did make some changes to this and so did the school district as far as, uh, some of these different items. So, under the purpose of the S R O program, it was stricken, the section that says, "And identifying and counseling troubled youth thereby diverting them from the criminal justice system." Of course, our S R O is not a counselor and does not have training. So that's why that was stricken out. Under the S R O obligations, um, there was a statement about teaching curriculum units. And again, our S R O is not a, a teacher, he's a law enforcement officer. But they are to have, uh, leading classroom discussions, presentations, and presenting assemblies covering topics that are developmentally appropriate for students in attendance. So there is that educational piece there. Again, in B, on page two of the M O U, we took out counseling. And C, uh, pointed out that this, uh, S R O will be in the elementary schools.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Um, can I assume that the strikeouts are what you deleted and, uh, highlighted in yellow is what we added?
Yes, correct.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
We have assignments, uh, will be included, it was to be included in the S R O's regular, uh, sorry, to be included in the duties. But we wanted to adjust the S R O's regularly scheduled hours so that any of these different types of assignments would not create overtime. For the S R O. Into the city obligations, this patrol officer, uh, there is one edit in here that is not highlighted, I'll point out. We state that it'll be at John Brown Elementary and Betty Kiefer Elementary, that was not part of the county's sheriff's department's M O U. So, uh, it does talk about what the S R O will work primarily doing, um, and all of those different things that, uh, will be going on with the S R O. They have to be trained, uh, they have to. This, the city will fill in the S R O if there's, you know, if he goes on vacation or something to that effect, so that there's coverage available. There are some, uh, the district obligations, we struck out the words that they'll provide textbooks and relating curriculum materials because they're not gonna be teaching. There is gonna be an office there, they will have a phone there in that office if needed. So, the big, big difference, of course, we did it in the consideration, the sixty-five percent that is in line what they will be paying, fifty-five thousand, uh, and eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents, and they'll be getting, uh, they'll be making payments, ten monthly installments of the five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and forty-one cents. I get, my apologies for not highlighting that, but that is a change from the, uh, Kootenai County Sheriff's M O U because we wanted it to address what our costs were, uh, in that area. The big part here is we changed up the wording on these, uh, sections here that the agreement shall be amended for consideration and renewed annually unless terminated in accordance with section C of the section. And the reason for that is there will be, if there's pay increases for that officer, then we want the consideration of the increase of pay to be modified. And then we did take out the at any time verbiage in the termination of this. So if both entities believe that it's time to stop this, then they can do that. But if one entity wants to stop it, there has to be a one-year written notice. Okay? To do that. And then the other item of change, um, was down in the information sharing, this actually happened after we first sent it out to the city council, so I'm highlighting it in, in the blue. This is about, uh, information sharing, this is actually something that I found out that the county wanted to put in here and the school district. We didn't know what this meant, so when we asked for clarification, they said, well, that's what the county wanted to put in, so, uh, you can take it out. So we, we're taking that out.
Good move.
Okay, and then it's, it's up for the signatures of, of, uh, the board chair, uh, Dr. Meyer, uh, the mayor, and also the police chief for signatures. So that is the M O U that's here, and then Lisa's here too, if there's any questions that, uh, the council wanted to address on the M O U for the school resource officer.
Council, questions?
Hey, you have questions?
Yes, sir.
Two questions. And C, there is, um, that this is specifying that this is for the elementary schools.
Which C?
Oh, I can't.
Page two.
Oh, it's for me, my question is for me. Well, Lisa. Sorry, Tommy. Well, we agree on this. So, uh, we think that they need to be with the younger kids. He will go to the high school if needed and go and make appearances, but we want him with the younger kids. I think they're. Yes, so we, we agree on that, so that's why we want him down there. I agree.
And then, um, you don't feel that this is restricting you to certain, you don't feel that this language is too restrictive to hold you to just the elementary school? It doesn't provide you opportunities to, um, to be more broad, I guess?
Um, we, while we talk and he can go up there. Other school and. He can go up there anytime he wants, but I don't want him to be up there, I think this is kind of now, say the high school principal wants him up there all the time.
She pointed out here, okay. And then my other question that I had was regarding, um, the, the terms of renewal and termination. The disagreement shall remain in effect for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, um, public school fiscal year. But that the agreement shall be amended for consideration and renewed annually unless terminated, okay, so, so the agreement will be updated annually, but it will remain in effect for multiple years? And so then the termination, um, in writing that it requires a one-year, what is considered one-year, one fiscal year?
Yeah, so if they did it, uh, January one, then it's one year from January one. If they did it May one, then it's, it gives us a full year to determine what we're going to do with that police officer, whether we're gonna keep him on staff or whether or not we, you know, have to lay off a police officer in order to do that. But it gives us that full ability to do that. But we get notice.
May I, may I ask a question? I would anticipate that, uh, we would make those, uh, that decision at the end of our school year, um, which is prior to your budget, um, process and also prior to ours, so that then we have a year, a full year, as we obviously say. But, um, I don't, I would not anticipate that the school district would come to you in, in January or February, um, with the termination request, that it would be at the end of the school year.
The, um, one other question, not regarding the M O U, but regarding staffing this position, is this a seniority bid of appointment? How do you, how do you staff the position?
Well, I'm just here, I'll put him on the spot. He's been doing it for us, that's why he's here, he's excited. And, um, we'll just move him into it and. He wants to do it, which is a plus, because you don't want to put someone in there who doesn't want to do it, it won't work, it won't work. So, wants to do it, he's excited to do it, he has already been in the schools, the teachers and principals love him, so he will go to the spot and we'll have to replace him.
So is that by appointment or by seniority?
It's by, I picked him.
It's an appointment, okay, thank you.
I have a question about, uh, H C, the termination, one-year termination.
Yes.
So in, in June is when you make your decision, but you can't say, you know, you, you can say in June, we don't want him anymore, but we will still provide it for that one year.
Correct, and we would continue, so the way this, this reads, it's at the end of this year, which is not gonna happen, but.
Just pretend.
Just pretend. At the end of this year, we have some big budget issue and we're, we're saying we can't continue this expenditure for long-term. We would then put in writing to the city that at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this would be terminated. So there would be a year, um, for the city to do as, uh, Leon mentioned, do some planning and reflect to your personnel.
And you're, you're fine with that? You're fine with it?
And two.
One other question, has this M O U been approved by school?
They know it's coming, they, they have, um, they waited for the county to, to approve, prove it on there and before they approved it, they know this is coming and it will be approved.
They've had an opportunity to review it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think it's, uh, the other computer.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the M O U agreement with the Lakeland School District for this school resource officer.
I'll second that.
Motion made, so any further discussion? Share, please.
Darrell Ricker?
Aye.
Paula Los?
Aye.
Michael Hill?
Aye.
Stephen Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, uh, the Reader Digest version of staff reports. Eleven eight, is that the abridged version?
Um, well, it's August.
Up to the microphone.
Well, I thought you might get mad, it could be two seconds, get up there. We did, um, it's blank. Would we do Tuesday, Saturday, it's August at Hayden.
Don't give us that old PowerPoint thing again.
Okay, well, we went and had a booth, they do it every year. It's a fair. No, 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 down at, um, it's a little blank.
Job's fair?
No, it's, uh, come out and meet all the cops and everybody down there in Hayden.
Coffee with the cops?
Nope, that's coming. And then, uh, but you want this quick, so let's just, uh.
Let's say you.
We did something in Hayden, just like, hand out snow cones. National Night Out!
You got a new song.
National Night Out.
National Night Out.
We're working on a candy machine, um, school's gonna start, so we're gonna try doing, um, some extra patrol in front of the schools and get people to slow down before school starts, so, I don't know, if I get energetic, I might, you might see me in the crosswalk all day long, I'll tell people that it's me and make a stop and stuff. Trying to go.
Don't get run over.
Get in, just trying to slow down. Since you pressured me, that's all I have.
I think everybody knows you, we don't have to tell them.
I'm gonna be still at my speed, I'm moving, almost hit like five times, but. But that's a, that's a quick first, we don't want you hit, period.
Giants reporting.
Okay, I'm gonna make this, what'd you say? Okay. Quick. But the staff report that you have in your pocket is pretty self-explanatory, I don't want to take up too much time. Um, the statement of revenues, we're looking really good, um, for where we're sitting in July, revenues have came in really well, higher than anticipated, which is awesome. Moving down, expenses are just exactly where I would expect them to be at this time of the year, um, it's towards the end of the budget year. Keep going, keep going. These are our, um, an overall report of our funds. Um, again, we talked about the ones that say restricted, which can only be spent on things, uh, that they were attained for, this isn't just money lying around. If you please move down, water asset, um, there's our bank accounts. Keep in mind the recalls, we, we did move two point five million dollars out of that fund into, uh, the city rural fund, the diversified bond bank fund. So that will show up on the next report that you see next month. And that's our report for tonight.
Thank you, Melissa, any questions?
No.
Thank you, Melissa.
That's your problem. City administrator.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, in working on a lot of things for the city.
You're the guy that put the two-hour limit on, just so you remember.
He's gone.
There was a notice that came out and I would recommend that the city council reads it from the A I C. There was a letter that came out from the House, uh, leadership about reducing property taxes with the federal money. Might I point out, as I did during the budget presentation, those funds are restricted. We can't use it to offset property taxes. The nine hundred thousand that we received can only be used for infrastructure projects. The good news is, is why we would refer it to, if we put in a sewer line, expanded sewer line all the way down to Post Falls, that would reduce the fees that citizens would have to pay in the future. But it's not gonna reduce property taxes. The funding that we got last year, the six hundred and some thousand dollars that we received last year, that did reduce property taxes. So, please take that, those verbiage that they send out with a grain of salt because it's incorrect. You cannot use it for revenue replacement. With that, they have a property tax meeting on Friday. I might add, I looked at the, looked for an agenda last week because it's time for those interim committees to start meeting. There was no meeting scheduled, and then today I looked and they've got a meeting scheduled for Friday. So I'll be unable to attend that because I already have some prior commitments with my family, but I would imagine that they'll start posting those or make mention of the next meeting at the end of their meeting on Friday and I'll be able to stay attract, uh, up to speed on that and be able to attend those meetings as possible. This one will be recorded, so I'll be able to sit for half of my day watching the YouTube version of this meeting. So, um, I'll, I'll get up to speed on that next week and get ready to attend the next, uh, property tax hearing, uh, meeting. Other than that, uh, that's it, unless you have any questions.
Questions?
No.
Uh, mayor's report and appointments, I actually have a proclamation that will put on the record tonight. It will be given on nine eleven out here in front of Main Street. Uh, to the city hall. Council report, Stephen?
Nothing.
Darrell?
Well, I.
Follow.
I heard today that they've canceled food beds, so.
What?
It's sad over there.
Did they really? Yep.
Just now. And if you're registered, you only get twenty percent of your entry fee back.
Yep. So anyway, I just thought, I thought that was sad, but.
So they're keeping the money?
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, really good.
I think I read today, so I'm, I'm gonna take another turn here, that the fire restrictions are coming off, is that, did anyone hear that?
Friday.
That was a Friday.
Wow, I'm surprised.
That's good news for those guys who would like to go camping at least one time this summer.
Like me?
They're like me.
Okay.
Seeing no further. Yeah, I did, you said nothing. See, thanks for the help though, it's been a long night.
I'm just watching out for you.
Uh, seeing no further city business before us tonight, without objection, we're here.
Good night. Thank you guys, good job, Mayor.
I think everybody's stoned.
You know, when you rush me, ouch.
I didn't know you were gonna get a brain freeze, my God.
Nobody helped me out, nobody.
Making split decisions.
All these people in here.